Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the city council takes action on items, holds public hearings and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-dashwa.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV channel 191 on spectrum cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed in the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can I get a roll call please?
Council members Brown...
Mr. Brown is excused this evening.
Thank you. Campos?
Present.
Mr. Melon is also excused this evening.
Thank you. Roach?
Present.
Serrano?
Here.
Mayor Potam Maloney?
Present.
And Mayor Barajas?
Thank you, present. If you would all please join us in the pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that and we will be going, moving on to our next item on the agenda, executive session, executive session for qualifications of an applicant for public employment per RCW 42.30.110.1G. The discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110.1L. For 30 minutes, we will be meeting with staff, counsel, and we will be returning at not 8:34 but 7:34, 30, 34. Thank you.
Hello everyone, again we will be extending our executive session for another 30 minutes to come back at 8:06. Thank you.
Thank you everyone for waiting, we are now back from executive session and we will move on to. Item five on our agenda consent agenda, all items listed under the consent agenda. Are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items if further discussion is desired by council members or the public. The item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. And considered separately with that we go on to item A approval of meeting minutes for October seventeen twenty four thirty one. And November first and second. Item B bills and communications. Item C resolution number forty two sixty seven declaring the city of Pasco twenty twenty three legislative priorities. Item D resolution of forty two sixty eight of number resolution number forty two sixty eight. Argent Road phase one project acceptance. Item E approved Tri-City Regional Hotel Motel Commission twenty twenty three marketing plan and budget. Item F historic preservation commission reappointment of Devi. Devi Tate, thank you. Item G code enforcement board appointment of Dwayne Spear and reappointments of Dwayne Van Beek, James Rollinson and Mary Gutierrez. Item H Happo Center Advisory Board appointment of Leo Peralas. And with that, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
There's motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Serrano and can I get a roll call vote please?
Yes. Councilmember Serrano?
Yes.
Campos?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
And Barajas.
Yes, and it passes unanimously.
Is Milne online?
Do we have council member?
Yeah, I'm here, it was a yes for me.
Thank you.
And with that, we pass unanimously, thank you. We will move on to item six on our agenda, proclamations and acknowledgements and I actually do have. Something on here, if you've noticed, we do have some green lights laying around. Operation Green Light for Veterans, the National Association of Counties issued an Operation Green Light for Veterans initiative. In advance of Veterans Day and the city of Pasco received a request from Benton County to support this effort a few weeks ago. In such. As Mayor of City of Pasco, I've issued a proclamation declaring. Operation Green Light for Veterans Week from November seventh through November thirteen. And encourage anyone within Pasco to place a green light in the windows of your homes or businesses. Or shine green lights on your businesses during the month of November to raise awareness about the unique challenges veterans face. And the resources available to assist them and their families at the county, state and federal levels. The lights in front of city council tonight are a tribute to this important effort and green spotlights all with, sorry. And green spotlights will shine on Pasco City Hall for the remainder of the month. Thank you again. With that, we move on to item seven visitors other than agenda items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and or submit written information for consideration. By the council outside of formal meetings. And with that, I would like to invite anyone that has a comment to please step forward to the podium, state your name. And address for the record. Anyone in the chambers wishes to speak or address the council? Go ahead ma'am. Yes ma'am.
Hi folks, thank you for this time to speak concerning an issue. Which we are all aware of and concerned about homelessness and caring for the unhoused. Tonight, I represent the Community Unitarian Universalist Congregation. Which is right down the street here on Sylvester two eight twenty eight nineteen Sylvester West. We've had multiple individuals shelter on our property over the last year. They've spent nights in our buildings, front door alcove, slept in our gardening shed. Defecated in our native plants garden. Left drug paraphernalia on sidewalks, left condoms and clothes in our children's play yard and camped on our grounds. Due to a recent robbery, we cannot lock our shed and unhoused people have been using it regularly for shelter. Just last week, one of our members found someone in the shed and she wasn't sure if he was asleep or dead. Just last week, one of our members found someone in the shed and she wasn't sure if he was asleep or dead. Our neighbor, the Pasco Eagles Aerie two-two-four-one, has found someone sleeping in their dumpster. Our approaches have been to conduct random checks of the building at night. Install security camera, provide brighter lighting and call the Pasco Police when we've had someone on the property. The police have routinely encouraged the individuals to leave the premises. And on behalf of our congregation, I must say how helpful the Pasco Police have been. Each time their response has been respectful and they have managed to address the situation without escalating it. Our thanks to them. Our responses have been directed towards safety and compassion and our individual responses are simply inadequate. To address the larger problem in our area. We are a small congregation. And we don't have the resources, financial or personnel to provide necessary support or aid. The police informed us that some of these homeless individuals. Have been kicked out of local homeless shelters for not complying with shelter policies. We know that Pasco is working with other cities to provide services for the homeless across the Tri-Cities. At this time, needs have outgrown the provisions of assistance. For the well-being of the homeless and the safety of our members, we request that the city expand support for our homeless population.
Ma'am, I'd like to ask you to please wrap up your comments.
Yes, absolutely. We ask that information about current services be shared more effectively across the community. Thank you for listening with compassion and for your work in leading our city. Respectfully submitted Nancy Brungard.
Thank you.
I know typically we don't ask, Ms. Brungard? Can you in, uh, indicate three data points for me? One. When did this increase? If such an increase occurs, how long has it been persistence? What, uh, I'm not asking for a one for one, but about two times, three times and, um. I think fundamentally, those are the things that I'm interested in understanding. How long this phenomenon's been going on and what the increase in traffic you've seen is?
Absolutely. It's been about six months. Uh, we've seen an increase routinely over that time from when it was maybe once or twice a week to now it's multiple times a week. So, uh, it's, it's getting worse and we just are at a loss as to. How to help these folks and also how to keep our congregation safe.
Certainly, I, I appreciate that information and I appreciate the compliments and kudos to our police and presumably Fire Force as well. So thanks to them and hopefully we can find a meaningful solution.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Does anyone else wish to approach council? Seeing no more public comment, we will move forward with our item eight on the agenda, reports from committees and or officer, officers. Um, does any of our council have any reports, uh, regarding any events or meetings attended in the last week? Councilwoman Roach?
Just wanted to say on November second, we held in council chambers, a public listening session on redistricting and we had a, about a dozen people show up. Um, all entered their comments, um, to us, uh, council member, excuse me. Mayor Pro Tem Maloney was also in attendance as well as some city staff and, um, definitely worth the time to hear what folks had to say.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or, um, input, reports? Mr., uh, Councilman Melon, do you have any, um, reports?
Um, yes, I do. I did attend a COCO meeting before I left and. We did talk about the signing that you did with their governor of the CLIMA and that it was going to be. Brought to the Historical Society so they could display it for posterity. So I thought that was kind of cool. Um, that was kind of the, the main things that we talked about was. The cooperation between CLIMA and, uh, and moving forward and just being very proud of what progress that has gone down. So. That was my report. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Councilman Melon. Any further comments? Seeing that, we will move forward to item number nine, hearing and council action on ordinances and resolutions. Councilman Campos?
I got nudged in the ribs by Councilwoman Zara. I, I graduated Pasco PD Citizens Academy. Go me.
Go you. Thank you for participating in the Citizens Academy. Um. If I'm not mistaken, uh, Deputy Chief Cook, that was what twenty participants? Great show. Thanks. Alright, so moving on to item A. Um, public hearing and ordinances numbers forty-six nineteen and forty-six twenty, first readings of twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four. Operating and capital projects budget by Director Buckley.
Good evening tonight.
Good evening.
Uh, I, you introduced it well. We are here for the first reading of our budget for the twenty-three twenty-four biennium. And, uh, you have a handout that I provided, or was we provided? And it, uh, I'm not going to touch on all the slides because I know that would take a little while. So. Uh, try to hustle through here, um, but stop me at any time if you have questions and I know there's other people. Uh, on staff that are in the audience and attending that can assist too. Um, first of all, we've often started with this, why would, our question, why would? The citizens want us back if we stop doing what we do? And so there's a slide that kind of says that. And outlines many things that we're building on council goals and, and, uh, in, uh, citizen needs, uh, uh, in this next biennium. Some of these things are, uh, completed and being put into. Practice and plan and then others are still ongoing and will be completed in this next biennium. But are included in the budget. Um, this next slide, um. One of the hardest parts about the budget and really honestly about the last many years has been forecasting. We've had a unusual. Set of years thanks to the pandemic and, uh, I think you all recall Director Sigdel. Many times, uh, standing before you explaining that we expected that. Tax revenues would decrease substantially and we were concerned about sales tax, uh, but we. They didn't decrease as we expected and so, um, as we entered this budget, we analyzed very often or in many ways. What might happen? So you can see in the slide, there's a couple, a handful of scenarios, uh, partially related on. Ongoing sales tax and then added to that are large projects that are, uh, will be occurring in the biennium. So we have a few range of sales tax figures there for you to look at and, and see the analysis that we went through as we planned the budget. And I shared this last.
Director Buckley, um, sorry to interrupt you real quick.
Yes.
I'm, I'm seeing this pretty, pretty fresh right now. Just wanted to make sure I understand.
Okay.
Um, so when I'm looking at these different, um, bar charts and the histogram from the, the previous slide, if we don't want to go back to that. Um, so your planning. Budget for that's included in this, this reading is which line?
The, the last line is what's in the budget, the, uh, the bottom one, kind, yes, the lighter blue one. So, um, we have less budget. In twenty-two-three and a little more tax revenue budgeted in twenty-two-four from our scenarios. The twenty-two-four amount is. Not anticipating a lot of recovery, so it's probably smaller than it might end up being, but. Uh, we will definitely, as we monitor throughout the year and do our mid-biennium adjustment, you know, may need to move that up.
What we saw during a, um, you know, during our last big recession back in two thousand and eight. Um, is that many communities across the country didn't just lose out on sales revenue. That was a thing, that was one thing. But they also, um, decreased in what was seen as a pretty inelastic measure, which was property values. Uh, they saw those pretty, pretty significantly plunge. We were fortunate in the Tri-Cities to have the federal government, because of the Hanford site, because of the lab. Um, we had something along the lines of three billion dollars of, uh, federal money invested in our community. So we didn't see. We saw flattening as I recall of property values, but we did not see a decrease in property values. Um, since then, I've seen a number of metrics that are showing that we are now. Sorry, one other aspect of that is that we were also, did not seem to be under the same bubble as the rest of the nation. Our property values had not been rising at the same rate as the rest of the country. And so we weren't seeing necessarily the speculation in the Tri-Cities that we were seeing in many other communities. What we've seen since then, um, I've seen our local economist, um, I forget exactly her name, Asia's something, I, I, I misremember her last name. Um, she has shown a number of charts that indicate that we are now, if. If the country's in a, a housing bubble, we are right alongside them. We are no longer insulated and following a different trajectory than that. Um, and nor do I think if we were to end up in a downturn over the next year or two, as many are forecasting. Um, I'm not certain that we would be bailed out for the federal government the same way we were, um, you know, a decade and a half ago or whatever that. Decade ago, when, when we, when we went, when, uh, when the funding was there. Did you look at, that's a lot of preface to say, did you look at any scenarios in which our property taxes? Uh, our property values actually decrease and how does that affect our property tax? Um, not just rates, but property tax revenue. Would we see that decrease as well if the assessed property values were to potentially drop? And if you, this is not the right time to get into that question because you need more deep, more time to look at that. I fully respect and understand that. My concern is that the next two, next few years could be very hard. I don't know that they will be. Um, but when we're being asked to hire an additional hundred staff. Um, that is a, the twenty, about twenty to twenty-five percent more staff than we have currently. Some of those are in elastic funds like water rates, sewer rates, et cetera. And, but some of those are, um, are a much more elastic rates out of the general fund. And so my concern is not just the sales tax, but also the property taxes. Um, I do not want to in my term have to lay off city staff because we over hired by a significant amount right now. So.
I will do more research and respond to you on that. I, we have in the budget right now, what are, we have levied in the past. So as you know, because that was what the recommendation was. So the, that is what we have budgeted now, but I can do some research and. And double check on what the effect of that would be. If we, if, uh, assessed values did go substantially down, um, and then return with that information.
I appreciate that. Um, I just want to make sure I have a bounding scenario of, of what happens if things really go, go bad and how do we? Can we weather it with a rainy day fund or is it something where we are looking at, um, layoffs because we make a decision during this budget? And, um, are maybe overly aggressive in the way we approach the, uh, the staffing needs, uh, you know, as the city has recommended.
Yeah, in per se, we don't have a rainy day fund. We just have our ending fund balance and so, um, that.
A very healthy, uh, healthy, healthy general fund balance, yes.
Anticipated to be eighteen million dollars at the end of twenty-two-four and, um. Uh, sixty days is about, of operating is about, um, twelve million dollars. So we do have an excess of that. Amount of the reserve, uh, but not substantial amount and nothing specifically specified as a rainy day fund. So. But something that we definitely want to plan for and have some policies to help guide that in the future.
Understood. So I just appreciate a little more information on what happens if things go. This is, if we have a rough couple of years, what does that really look like?
Okay, that sounds good. I'll find out for sure. I haven't.
Understood.
An expectation, but I don't want to give you wrong information. So I'll double check.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. This is not the last time we hear the budget from, from this year. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we looked at this just sort of, these are different things that we included in our planning. Uh, so I'll just keep going as we talked about it. We do have next of many pages of the, the personnel requests that, um. Mayor Pro Tem Maloney mentioned, they are by department, by fund and there's, um, the position. And number and then some notes mainly related to financing, uh, and funding of the positions. I won't go into detail, but you have it all there. And then if you have more questions, you can surely ask. Um, and then there's a few slides related to the different funds, uh, general fund as was noted has, um, some. Uh, to the side of each fund that's outlined, has some unusual or one-time infrequent sorts of things that are making difference to the ending fund balance and drawing it down. Um, so those are identified. The one thing I would like to point out is the TIF DEF surface is, or service is the. Is an estimate that could be much more stretched out. We don't, since we have not issued the debt yet. And timing and the structure of the debt will make a difference on that, but to be conservative, we put the full amount in the budget. Same situation with utility fund, um, uh, that this, all the funds that you're looking at here are fully loaded with the positions requested. And, um, that have some growth related one-time purchases that may happen, might not, but they're budgeted and if they did not. If the growth did not indicate that needed to happen and money would not be spent. Uh, we are anticipating a rate study in the budget for irrigation and stormwater utilities. And also a new capital expansion rate to be calculated, which will help pay for growth. And there is an update on the ARPA information. And projects and then of course the animal shelter fund will be, we're going to come back and ask you to, uh, create that fund. And then, uh, we will take care of new operations and animal control activity and shelter operations in this fund and share the. Uh, cost with our partners with other cities. And little update on planning efforts either completed or to be completed in this coming biennium. And then finally, just wanted to point out some, um, things that have, we have considered, uh, for the. Coming, you know, that we want to look at in the coming biennium, uh, growing in step with community growth. Uh, how to service those needs, both current and growing new cu- new customers and new citizens. The, uh, timing and funding related to capital projects. Uh, and having enough rates or property taxes or tax revenues, different revenue sources to pay for capital improvements. And then finally, just making sure that we consider, uh, that revenue source, sources and expense drivers match up well so that we're. Trying to be equitable with the citizens. And these are just things that are budgeted that we haven't mentioned yet. Uh, there's, uh, some plans, implementing some plans like the downtown master plan. One of the positions, uh, requested would help organize that and for, uh. Foster the program, uh, and some new software programs. Uh, we are planning on, uh. Engaging a consultant on a general fund long-term forecast model, which will help answer some of these questions that we're struggling with now, I think, um, in advance and. Helping the planning, uh, for both staff and council. And finally, we have quite a few, uh, impact fee studies and decisions to be made. So just to. Point that out. So it's in your, it's probably in your minds already, but that's coming. Um, and then finally, uh, these are just kind of unknown things, uh, definitely one, the final one at the bottom of the page is. What I mentioned before, considering a reserve policy to, to kind of help. Plan for the future and make everyone's, uh, decision-making a little more easy. And then I'll just stop talking and let you ask any questions you might have.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions or comments from council regarding the information Director Buckley just shared? Councilma- Councilwoman Roach?
Thank you. Um, in the ARPA funding page that we had, and I don't, I'm trying to flip back to it.
Yeah, I think that.
I, I think there was an excess, uh, unallocated six-hundred-and-fifty, six remaining to be allocated. When did we ask council and to, when is staff anticipating bringing that back to council in terms of allocation?
I'm not sure if it's on the agenda or.
Or maybe it's a question for my fellow council members as to when we want to.
I, I think that's, that's probably appropriate. It's a, it's something that we can always bring as a, an update of. Where, where we were from the, the last point and, and make sure that the conversation takes place if there's new items or other things that we need to explore.
So I, um, I think the allocation I recall, um, previous director mentioned was, it needs to be allocated by twenty-two-three? In the year twenty-two?
Twenty-two-four.
Twenty-two-four, okay. Um. I guess my comment to council would just be fellow council members that we take into consideration that we just had a mini retreat and discussed. Some of our priorities and consider maybe some of that funding going towards some of those priorities, those goals that we discussed.
Any comment? Um, Councilman Campos?
Yeah, on that note, um, I'd like to see it come back before us sooner rather than later. Um, that way we can have ample discussion. About it prior to it, it going away. So, um. Hopefully that's the way the rest of council feels too.
Thank you for that. Mayor Pro Tem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you Director Buckley. Um, no question for you, but it's fun to respond. Thank you, Mayor Barahas, and thank you, Director Buckley. Um no question for you, but it's fun to respond about the about the uh the ARPA funds. Um we have been so proactive on using this money and I mean, I think the um, I think Ken Kenwick or Benton County or something like that, they just. Started releasing funds out to businesses, so um that seems like such old information for us at this point in time, because we had it out like two years ago. Um I would very much like to go ahead and make sure we understand what to allocate it for. Um and I would note that um we continue to hear a whole lot of comments about mental health and homelessness services. Um and to what extent we can help mitigate those. Um in addition to items we've talked about in a retreat, um I'm very supportive of. Um I believe we also have a couple of projects in um um projects that may that may be well suited for. For those asked there in line with things that we did before, um but maybe didn't complete the job, so. Yeah, I'd I'd like to see us soon. I guess we don't need to see it for this budget necessarily. We have the money um there and it's bound to be spent. But I'll, but maybe early next year, we can, we can figure out what to do with it. Thank you.
Councilman Serrano.
I'll echo those words, early next year. I don't think we're in a rush in in twenty twenty-two, given the monumental tasks we have in front of us with the issues we're talking about tonight. Little bit more priority than spending money that's been allocated. It doesn't need to be spent for a year and a half, two years. Um but yeah, I I think early next year is, the timing is so appropriate.
Councilman Mellon, do you have any comments or questions?
At the moment, I'm good.
Thank you very much, Director Orley, I'm sorry, Director Buckley. I appreciate your information. Thank you very much, and we will be. Do we have anyone in the, do we have anyone in the um. Chambers that wishes to make any comment or information or feedback regarding um this item?
This isn't a public hearing.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, did we open the, are we gonna open the public hearing? Is that what we're doing?
No, just looking for feedback from the community.
So we we need to uh open a public hearing?
We should, so at this point, it is eight thirty-four, we will be opening a public hearing to get comment feedback from the community. Okay, so anyone in the chambers that wishes to make any comment in regards to this item? Second announcement, anyone in the chambers that wishes to make any comment on this item? Third and final opportunity to make a comment on this item. Hearing no comment. This hearing is closed, and can I get a motion?
Mayor Barahas, I move for the uh first reading of ordinance number four six one nine for consideration of the city of Pasco Biennial Operating Budget. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four by title only.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign? And it passes unanimously.
Hi, Mayor Barahas, I moved for the first reading of ordinance number four six two zero. For consideration of the city of Pasco Biennial Capital Projects Budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty and to twenty twenty-four by title only.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seceded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign? And it passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to our next item, item B. Public comment opportunity related to city council's draft redistricting plan, and we have city attorney. Eric Ferguson or our interim Adam Lincoln.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh so as was previously mentioned, on the second earlier in the week, we started a. Uh sort of listening session to to gather feedback on the redistricting plan. Um this evening, we'll we'll have a sort of synopsis of um. The the history behind uh the the last redistricting, which Mr. Ferguson will cover. And then also on the line, we have uh Dr. Morrison and uh Ms. Daylong. Who are able to uh also jump in and answer questions as as they come up about the. Um legal ramifications of of redistricting and some hopefully answer some of the questions about the. Uh design of the map as as drafted currently. So with that, I'll turn it over to uh Mr. Uh.
Great, thank you. Just a a quick little recap of how we got here. Um we um uh. Uh this has been a long involved process, obviously for the city of Pasco. Uh some of the folks that that were around during that time uh uh are are with us now, so uh. They uh correct me if when I get off track, if I mistake anything. So anyway, a long and short of it is uh. What what the city of Pasco was originally dealing with was they were trying to move over to a district system and we had a state law that pre- prevented us from being able to do that. Uh subsequent to that, uh tried to get the law changed, uh really weren't able to successfully do that uh during the the time when we needed to. Um the uh city entered a consent decree, a partial consent decree with the ACLU. Uh in federal court to be able to give the city uh jurisdiction to uh be able to uh change, uh move to a district system. Uh even though it was not gonna be compliant with the the state law. Uh the result of that uh was that uh the uh the city, as well as the ACLU, had differing uh. I had opinions about how that uh district system should look. Uh at the end of the day, Federal Judge Tsuko uh decided to uh agree with the city's proposed plan uh to move to a district system of six. Uh districts with one at large. Uh so that was the starting point, or that's the the uh the plan that was approved. Uh which uh really put the city in a good position to be able to show that we were in compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act. So. With that, we're, that's really kind of the beginning point uh that we really start this this discussion. And uh so everything that we're doing now, uh there's a, there's a new law that came into effect. Uh R C W twenty-nine A seventy-six oh one oh, which requires us to redistrict every decennial census, so. What we're really trying to can uh do with this particular process is we're trying to combine both of those. We're trying to comply with the uh the law that uh requires us to go through this redistricting process with the new decennial census numbers. At the same time, making sure that the uh federally approved uh redistricting or districting plan. Uh is still able to maintain its legal validity. So. Uh it's a very difficult process trying to uh kind of merge both of those. Um the city of Pasco obviously uh has a a much more uh complicated uh procedure or process that it has to go through. So uh one of the things that we need to do to still be able to comply with the law is to go through and uh have a public comment session. So. With that, uh unless there's any questions uh about history, um happy to uh take any questions.
Thank you very much for that explanation. So at this point, do we have any comments from council? Councilman Serrano.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and recuse myself from this action, so I'll be in back, just call me out.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, do we have any questions or comments from council before I turn it over to uh for public comment?
Madam Mayor, if I could just add one more thing. Uh the one of the things that was really critical about uh the history of the decision that was reached by Federal Judge Tsuko. With the the uh the order uh from our our initial districting process was that the city of Pasco was able to come up with. Three or what's referred to as majority minority districts. Uh so. Uh that is really a a central key factor in going through this redistricting process is to maintain the ability to have. Because of the history of uh the protected class Hispanics not being able to elect a candidate of their choice. Uh we uh the, it's absolutely inherently critical that uh those three majority minority districts are maintained. Through this process as well. So anyway, just wanted to add a little more to that in case folks didn't understand why it was so critical.
Thank you. Thank you for that uh further information, for context. Um so seeing no comment from council, I will invite uh anyone in the chambers to make a comment. Go ahead and step forward, please, Mr. Portugal. If you can press the button, please. Thank you.
There we go. I'm here uh tonight representing the Legal United Latin American Citizens, the Tri-Cities Council four seven zero one four. Um and uh just to share our observations on what uh the plan is for redistricting. Uh first, uh just to uh inform, uh let you know that the city, and I think this you already know, the city. Has known since twenty seventeen, the twenty seventeen lawsuit that um it was never completed because of the negotiated agreement. With ACLU, that the city would be required to um redistrict in twenty twenty-two. So so the city only notified residents of this intent. Uh to redistrict and implement a new map in late October. Days before the state is required um uh the redistricting li- deadline. So us, because kind of a little unprepared, because the first meeting was on November second. And although um uh not everybody in the Latino community celebrates Day of the Dead. A great many number of us kind of do something that day, so it was kind of difficult to uh to attend the uh the first meeting. Um so um so the cities, the citizens have only had one meeting. Uh to provide formal feedback that the city uh on the proposed map, which may possibly dilute the Latino voter in District Two. The city of Pasco settled a lawsuit under section two of the federal voting rights uh in twenty seventeen. And she have understood that uh that this is, you know, something that is an obligation based on the WBRA. The new District Two, if we look at uh District Two right there on the map that is now for us to see. Um eh it's, it looks like um eh. This this is, this was a Latino uh district. It was designed under the federal settlement. But then, and on this map, is the most changed district in the new plan. And there's been no explanation on why District Two has changed so much, if you compare, well. With the twenty seventeen map. Um so um eh it looks like uh the demographer. Eh try try to place a high-density white uh white precincts, if you see the website. Into um into uh um. From 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 western Pasco into a Latino majority district in an attempt to dilute the Latino vote. These are the observations for uh from our council. And um eh uh. We have, uh and I'm gonna give you a copy of our observations, so you can have that for your records. So our question is, uh did uh did the city reach out to the ACLU to of Washington um to receive their opinion? That would be one question. Um and then uh obviously you have legal experts uh here and they help you and uh. Um and uh in uh the creation of this map, um so this will be a question for them too. And the last will be, why um did the city wait until days before? The state redistricting legal requirement to show the map to us, to the public. So that's, that was a question. Uh so I, we believe that this is a process that is kind of like rushed. And has not followed any time or formal procedures for the community to have ample time to look at all the uh. Uh ramifications of the ma- the the map. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the um chambers wish to speak?
Good evening, Council. Jake Dorsey, four five two two, Moline Lane. Just wanted to point out something really quick. That map. And. This map are not the same. District Two is drawn differently. Um just wanted to know which map I'm supposed to trust? This one or that one? They're not the same.
The map with the precincts should be the 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 most accurate.
This one here, so don't, don't trust this street level one. Look at the borders on District Two, specifically up in here. Having territory that is not on that map. So I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. This is the the correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. So I do wanna point out that the map that you're pointing out here shows precincts. And the one that you pulled up is the proposed.
Madam Mayor, I I'm sorry, the both maps are, were uh finalized by our internal staff. The boundaries should be the same, it's just one has the backdrop of the precincts and one has the backdrop of street level detail. Um it will will correct the one that was, that's incorrect that Mr. Dorsey has pointed out. And and make sure that everyone has the most recent. So this map is the most up to, up to date with the precincts and the 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 backdrop. Thank you for putting that up.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Any further questions or comments?
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, Felix Vargas, uh Pasco, Washington. I I think that that uh fix that uh Mr. Dorsey pointed out would really help us a lot. I've done a lot of thinking about this, having sat on a a county commission redistricting um effort for seven months uh this last year. Um a a a process, by the way, which I hope our city does not go through. In the end, um we came to the status quo, which was not very helpful. We wanted to make change, did not succeed. I've done a lot of reflection. I've looked at the your redistricting plan and I, tonight, I'm here to say that I believe that it meets the letter and the spirit of the Washington State. Um uh Voting Rights Act, and I therefore urge you to approve it uh before the the deadline of fifteen November. Um I looked at the chart of the twenty twenty total population count, uh which is shown on your website. And uh was was shown at the uh public comment period um uh last uh two November. Um and it meets uh a minimum two critical requirements of the Voting Rights Act. Council districts are nearly equal in population and council district boundaries preserve existing communities of related and mutual interest. This fact is particularly notable in districts one, two, and six, where the percentage of voting age Hispanic population. Is in a commanding position to elect candidates of their choice. Uh and in districts three, four, and five, Hispanic voters have gone from from percentages that were in the teens and uh in uh. In mid twenties in the twenty seventeen map uh of uh voting age population. Uh to percentages now in the thirties range uh in the twenty twenty total population count before us. This is a significant improvement, um as Hispanic voters now greatly influence the outcome of elections uh in these districts over the next ten years. There is no credible dilution of of Hispanics' voting strength in the draft redistricting plan. That puts it at risk of noncompliance with the uh with the state and federal uh Voting Rights Act. We have, in short, as good a map uh now, uh and even better than what we had in twenty seventeen. Which elected a historically different city council than we have today. And to be sure, there'll be critics who will quibble about their precinct splitting and and small protrusions of a couple of boundary lines. And and eleventh hour decision-making, but I ask them honestly, uh do these points pose a serious threat of noncompliance with the Voting Rights Act? If they do, and if they change the outcome, that's one thing, but if it's not, let's approve the uh the new redistricting plan. Let's not drag the city through uh an endless debate without any assured outcome. Let's comply with the law, uh and let's move on to other important issues such as the ones we heard tonight about homeless people. And about affordable housing and the growth management um challenges. There's never a perfect redistricting plan, and I would ask that we not allow the perfect of uh to be the enemy of the good. So with that, I would just urge you to approve the draft uh registering plan, um and let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Campos.
Yeah, I just wanna thank Mr. Vargas for his comments. On the note of diluting the voters in District Two. Growing up in Pasco my entire life, living in the River Haven area off and on, it's become clear that more and more Hispanics are buying property. In the River Haven area, which is good, because more affluent in that area, first-generation Hispanics are becoming wealthy and buying property. All across the city. We're not bound to any one particular location in the city, and thank you again, Mr. Vargas, for your comments.
Dave Cortinas, uh four eleven West Clark with Latin Business Association. I want, I I uh, as you can see, we have a a difference of opinions, even amongst us Latinos here in Pasco. And uh of course, Gabriel Portegal gave some good points and Mr. Vargas gave some good points. And we all tend to uh try to come before the city council and bring your ideas and what we believe. and what we believe is right. Uh, Mr. Portegal mentioned that uh there's, hasn't been an ample enough time to be able to ask the, the, the community to come forward. November second, I knew I couldn't make it and uh I, my understanding was a very small turnout uh from the community to hear an opinion uh on redistricting. My question is the attorney, did he get a hold of ACLU along with the demographer and, and check to see if this map would even be accepted uh and approved? Eh, and the other thing is that I noticed in the county, uh the county, they uh did their redistricting and there, they weren't allowed to separate precincts. If you look at this map, there's twelve locations, twelve, thirteen locations on this map where the precincts are divided. I mean, s- different precincts are gonna be voting for different councilmen's. Uh, that, that, it, that's, that's, I, I've never seen that before. I'm not so sure if ACLU would, would, would agree with, with uh, with the map where precincts are being divided. Uh you can see the different colors on this map that uh, uh you can see one precinct's voting for one, one councilman, another precinct is, and the same precinct is voting for another councilman. So that's twelve or thirteen locations on this entire map uh where precincts will be divided. I'm not so sure that, that's even legal. But uh if something has changed, I don't know. But I know that if Felix Vargas was part of the commission, I mean, he could answer that, that that uh and make a redistrict in the county, they didn't split up any, any precincts. So what, we need to take a look at that and, and see why we're dividing precincts uh amongst a, a councilmen's. Uh, which, which is, I have never seen in any, any city. I cover a lot of cities in reporting and I have never seen a map where precincts are dividing city council. So I, I would definitely challenge uh, challenge that uh in, in that area. Uh, I appreciate Mr. Vargas's comments concerning the, the districts there. Uh, it was well said and, and put together. But I would challenge uh these uh differences of uh, of uh concerns about Hispanics winning city council positions. We had a, we had three precincts that were in favor for Latinos to win and we won. Fairly squared candidates that ran for office and won. We had three Latinos win. And then when it was time to reappoint, one of the seats that was won by a Latino, it was given away to an African American. I, I have, I have nothing against Afro-Americans. I have a lot of Afro-American friends, the best, my best friends. My best friends, uh Afro-Americans. But that seat was won by a Latino and a Latina. And then we appointed an African-American after it was already set up for elections so that Latinos could be uh, uh, so this council could be, look just like Pasco looks like. And that's what it was all about. I was part of that group when we, we uh, uh filed the lawsuit. And uh, and, and the same thing again. Uh, we have precincts and, and districts that are favoring Latinos to be elected so we can uh elect those that we like. And then we have a, a Blanche Barajas appoints someone and, and takes away a, a, an elected, elected position that was won by Latino. And I hope that don't happen ever again. You know, we get Latinos and Latinas in positions of power and then they forget about where, where they came from and who we are. And that's, that, that's my concern, uh i- is that we are very careful who we're appointing and how we're appointing in these positions uh when they're, are fairly won by Hispanics and Latinos in these positions. And then we give them away. Um, the other point that I want, I wanna mention is that uh, uh we, we need to uh look carefully that uh these deadlines are not pushed uh like this time. This is a, this is a uh, uh, something we're asking during the city council. I've never seen a, 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 a redistricting during the city council meeting. These, these meetings are, were, are to be taken out to the community and allow the community to attend these meetings. And, and not everybody likes coming to the council. Lots, lots of, I'm not gonna go. They don't listen to us anyway. You know, so, well, I'll go. So uh, I mean, I, I think thi- this second meeting, this is the second public meeting on redistricting and it was not given enough ample time uh for the community to come forward. So I, I, not like Mr. Vargas, would, would encourage you to not to uh, to approve this at this time because there's just too many question marks. The community wasn't given ample time to come forward and uh uh, uh, and give their comments. And as you can see, there isn't a whole lot of us here tonight uh concerning this, this subject. Uh, we're all here for several other reasons. But uh I, I think this, this hearing uh on redistricting uh was inadequate for the, the, the community to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment from chambers?
Good evening, Council. Thank you for this opportunity. I um was at the first opportunity that there was to address this map. Is this the map that we believe is the most correct one? Okay, so I got a couple of different comments. And yes, I guess I'm one of those that's quibbling with this map that we have before us today. Um, we were told by our experts that we could not have disjointed districts. And uh, we very clearly there above the precinct zero-four-zero, we have a disjointed district number three. So there's one thing that I think that needs to be addressed. Second thing is split, split precincts. Well, one more thing about the disjointed districts. We were told that, that uh, I'm sure it's for a good reason. This was by the doctor that's, that's here with us tonight online. And uh, we were told that it was sure it was for a good, good reason. There was, I think, four of us that asked that question at the last public hearing. And uh, that was the answer, that we were sure, he was sure it was for a good reason. And then on the split precincts, the same organization that is with us here, that is advising the city on this tonight, was the same one that was with the county that said we could not have split precincts. And when we asked for clarification on that, the answer was that it was nuanced. And uh, I agree that I may not be able to understand all of the nuances. But I think that we should have that opportunity as a public to understand those nuances. And I believe that it needs to be explained. Another question that I had last time that, that uh there was, seemed to be interest in finding out is what is the consequences if this was, were to be wa- um paused to give the opportunity to the count or the citizenry to uh address this further. Um, it seems to be a very compressed timeline. So we'd like to know what the consequences are if we were to wait. And then the last question that asked last time and they, they said it'll be addressed after this vote is taken. And that is, this map does not depict the city boundaries as what they are today. There's quite a number of, of citizens that have been annexed into the city that is not depicted in this map. And I wanted to know, how will that be um addressed in relationship to this map? So that's my comments. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, before I invite anyone else to step forward and make comment, I wanna give uh Councilwoman Roach an opportunity to speak.
I just wanted to provide comment back to some of the public comment that was made. Um, first to Ms. Brownman, uh in agreement about the, the nuance of uh breaking up precincts. And I agree with you there. Uh, it was not, the answers provided to us on November second were insufficient. Um, and I'm in agreement with you there. The uh prior comment made by Mr. Cortinas, I wanted to say that um despite how many African-American friends you have, um this council appointed um Mr. uh Councilmember Brown to that position based on the merits of uh his experience and his service to this community um and his district and the fact that he ran. Um, and beyond that, there was a Latina that was in that position who decided to step down, that many of us supported for that position. So that's unfortunate. She made that choice to do so. Um, that bears no burden on this council. And I believe that is all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I wanna turn it over to Mr. Ferguson before I go in, with Mr. Interim uh City Manager. Uh, Mr. Ferguson, I just wanted to see if you could please address some of the questions that were brought up regarding the notification not giving enough ample time. Um, the contacting the ACLU, the information regarding the demographic, the demographer. And again, if we can touch, just slightly touch on the, the initial redistricting or the districting that happened two thousand seventeen and how those positions are not bound to any particular race. Uh, and the opportunity for all to apply and how I just do wanna highlight that our current city council, as it currently sits, is representative of our city. Thank you.
Great. I'll uh try to do my best there. Uh, just to take it from a, a general perspective, uh, one of the things that's been problematic about this whole process, that, to be clear, um, Mr. Zabel uh made it clear and, and communicated with the council, because council made it clear that uh this was something that needed to be addressed, needed to be addressed uh comprehensively. And um, and that has definitely been the case. Now, uh, because of the unique situation that the City of Pasco finds itself in with the history that we have, uh, that has complicated the process. And there's frustration, I think, uh, from everybody on that. And uh, that has been something that um, uh, in hindsight, could we have done some things maybe a little different where we would be able to uh maybe alleviate some of that frustration uh potentially? But at the end of the day, the thing that, that I wanna make absolutely clear is, the goal has been, because of the history, the goal has been to make sure that no matter what we do next, uh, we know what we have is legal. So that's, and we know what we had before that wasn't. So that's our starting point. And when we start with that, uh, we, every decision point that we get to, we have to look at and make sure that it's still, is this still reflecting back and is this still legal? So eh, and you take that and then you take this exponential, and I often use that word when it's not necessary, but this time it's absolutely necessary, exponential growth uh in regions in this city in the last ten years because the, the decision that was found to be legal was based on the decennial census in two thousand ten. So from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty, uh, it is not an understatement to say that uh there has been an enormous amount of growth uh that has changed the demography of the city in that time period. So we have a, a very complex situation. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's, there's been some setbacks and those things have been uh frustrations, I think, for all of us. And so I certainly understand uh folks with their frustrations. But I do wanna be clear that the, every decision that has to be gone through has to be looked at from a legal perspective because of the history. So it is what it is. Uh, I don't mean to belabor that point. Uh, but I will say that uh, that has made things, I think, sometimes uh compared to other locations or other folks, especially with uh, that have gone through the districting process uh as opposed to redistricting. Uh, it can look oftentimes like uh, the, why is our, why does this have to be so different? Well, because of those constraints and because uh we're, we're taking what we've already previously done. And now we have a whole added layer of law to comply with, not just what everybody else is trying to comply with for the first time. So uh, I, I won't keep going on with that. But uh, with regard to the ACLU, uh certainly, um, the uh, their, their with their, the city is not under any requirement uh with regard to uh the consent decree. There was an order that was issued, uh, the court maintained jurisdiction uh for a period of time. I believe it was through the two thousand seventeen election cycle. Uh, after that, um, the court has no jurisdiction. So there would be no requirement to notify anybody uh with regard to those uh, uh, what their, what their thoughts on that may be. And they're certainly welcome to uh be part of this public process. Uh, uh, they're certainly able to do that. Uh, one of the last things I think I'll uh did wanna uh focus on was the, the issue about race and um preferential treatment. The thing, has to be clear, one of the things that is a, a kind of a tough distinction to, to, you know, really focus on and wrap your mind around is this idea that uh, the, the goals of the Voting Rights Act, both federal and state, require that in certain locations where candidates, where, where protected classes haven't been able to elect candidates of their choice if they wanted to. Uh, that's where these provisions come in. The only thing that these, these acts allow is the, to give protected classes the ability to choose candidates of their choice. It cannot, in both federal and state law, you cannot favor any particular class, race uh or ethnicity. So um, and, and so with these numbers, it's very, you know, you know, difficult to, to really get into. But essentially what happens is, when, that's why it's focused on not just population, but on voter age uh and, and what the demographics are for each of those districts and to make sure that there, there's three districts that have the ability to elect candidates of their choice. So that's really the, the takeaway uh for the three districts is that the, historically, those uh, those, those district or we, the, the candidates uh weren't able to be chosen and now they can be from those districts.
Thank you for the, for the context on that um misinterpretation of what those changes were. City, interim city manager.
With regard to the question about the annexations that have taken place, once the map is finalized, I believe there's a fairly prescriptive way that the annexations are then added to the existing district. So that is something that will come back to city council after the twenty-twenty map has been dealt with.
Thank you for that. Now with that.
So I just wanna follow up for that. Um, Mr. Lincoln, just real quick, um, if I understood you correctly, the key is that that property was not annexed during the census. So therefore, we need to develop a map based specifically and solely on the census and then amend that map to account for further annexations um, um, uh, that happened after that census occurred.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Any further comment from chambers regarding this issue? Looks like there's no further comment. I hope we've addressed all your questions or some of your questions. Um, this is not, um, we will be returning to this um information. Councilman uh Combs?
Madam Mayor, before we wrap, do we want to give, uh, uh, my understanding, right? Interim city manager, we have Dr. Morrison and Ms. Daylong on the line. If they've heard any questions that need to be answered before we wrap, that way we can prevent people coming back to us at the next meeting saying, you still didn't answer our questions.
They are on the line, yes.
They are online. Uh, Dr. Morrison, would you like to address any of the questions that were brought up?
Uh, I, I would like to address them. Um, and I hope you will give me enough time to do so as I'd like to. Uh, first, I want, I just, this is a matter of addressing a question by Melissa McBurney from the last meeting, which I had mentioned receiving, but we never got around to my actually answering her concern. Uh, she caught a, an arithmetic error and I wanted to, I want her to know that uh she was correct in correcting it. And fortunately, uh, it has no material effect on the plan itself. Uh, and you should understand that before we finalize the plan, we do have to go through a process of double-checking all the, you know, all the numbers. So uh, for, for Ms. McBurney, thank you uh for alerting me to that. We would have caught it uh going through the final process, I'm sure. Uh, some, some substantive matters. Um, first of all, I, I wanna underscore a point that was made about how the city has changed so much demographically. It's not the same city in terms of the people in it and where they are as it was ten years ago. And that's why things look so different. I, I can tell you that Pasco has changed substantially more than most of the cities that I'm called upon or counties to redistrict. Um, the second point that I wanted to make was that just so the law, I, I think I'm, I'm not speaking offhand as a lawyer here, but the requirement that I understand the law to make is that redistricting is done every ten years thinking in our minds that we're doing it as of the official count as of April first twenty-ten or twenty-twenty or twenty-thirty. So what you're looking at is the plan that is based on the world as the federal census displayed it or portrayed it for us numerically as of that hypothetical date of enumeration. And they actually say, think of it as April first twenty-twenty. Now, the annexations Now, the annexations, uh, I don't know when they were made, but I know they hadn't been made as of the twenty twenty census. And if some of them are, are to be made anytime after today. Uh, that is to say officially made, so that these annex territories are part of one or another district, have to be made part of them. Um, then we would be looking at them using data that are uh almost three years old. And that's not how I'm supposed to do it, I'm supposed to present you with a plan that says, this is the way it was. As of the decennial census according to federal requirements, now when you officially annex territory. You will be distorting to some extent the populations that I had tried to equalize. And of course, this happens in many cities throughout the decade. And one way to handle this is to say, well, we know that there's going to be an annexation. So maybe if we're going to annex some territory somewhere, we should underpopulate in so, to a degree. One of the districts because we know it's going to absorb some newly developed territory somewhere. In this case, you've got a situation where annexation from my standpoint is much more of a concern because. It could look like I had set up the boundaries so that when the annexations kicked in, suddenly it was like a dump truck of. People who were not Hispanic being dumped into a district that I had carefully crafted. So that it would be fifty one or fifty two percent Hispanic and hopefully would increase in Hispanic presence. Over the successive years, uh, that could look like a fairly devious way to draw districts. Uh, I want to um, just make one point that I want you all to understand. My, I would say the, the most important aim that I had apart from. Meeting the very strict numerical standards like shouldn't exceed a total deviation of ten percentage points. Uh, the second most important thing from my standpoint was to assure that. I had created a map that no plaintiff could possibly look at and say, we can make a better one and I stand by that. I don't think anyone can draw a better plan, substantially better. It, it, they could draw different plans that might be almost as good and would look very different, but I would submit to you that. The priority in my mind here has been on assuring that I have created not only three. Majority minority districts, majority Hispanic districts, but that they are not just bare majorities like fifty point one percent. Or fifty point nine percent, but by my estimate, uh, these are. Two unquestionably Hispanic districts in which Hispanics control the vote and a third one where I think. Uh, it is certainly the case that in terms of the, of the legal terminology that's used, the opportunity to elect is there. Uh, one other point I wanted to make about the precincts, um, I, I want to make clear that. Precincts are regarded as administrative boundaries, they're the way you all hold your elections. And those boundaries can be changed to accommodate um places where there might be twice as many people living. As there were ten years ago, they might have to be divided and I will make a, 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 a much. Clearer and totally unambiguous statement. Uh, about the split precincts, which goes as follows, I set out with the precincts that existed at the time I began. And I said, my ideal objective here is to keep all the, all the precincts intact. That is to say, I want to redistrict using precincts as blocks of geography. It was only in instances where if I did that, I would be. Perceived, if someone looked closely, I would perceive, be, I could be perceived of as having ever so slightly diluted. The voting strength of Hispanics, if not directly, indirectly by setting up another mandatory. Uh, dilution of them in an, in an adjoining precinct, so I want to state clearly for the record. That the only time I split a precinct was when I had to in order to preserve Hispanic voting strength. And that, th- there's no conditions on that at all, just so you know it. The fact that there are precincts uh that are split. It, the, the reasons were not apparent in the earlier map because you didn't see the kind of outlines of the street detail. Beneath the map and that's why I requested that your GIS person produce a map that gave a sense of, you know, where is a precinct. Kind of riddled with obviously a lot of streets and a lot of people living there and where is a precinct. Look like it's got very few streets and probably doesn't have very many residents, even though it may appear to be quite large. Just in terms of the space, the space it takes up, so it's a long-winded way of saying that. I've tried to do my best on this and I honestly do not believe that any plaintiff's demographer. Could substantially or could materially improve on it.
Mr. Morrison, thank you for your comments. Do we have any further comments from any council member? Uh, Mayor Pretamaloni?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, um, Dr. Morrison, I, I have, I have a question just to, just to clarify, make sure I understand that last comment. So districts three, four and five are not majority Hispanic age voting population, is, is that correct?
That's correct, there are, they have the characteristics of three, four and five. Are that they are twenty five percent, twenty seven percent and twenty four percent. Latino voting age or citizen voting age population, so basically three quarters. Of the people in those three districts, uh, three, four and five, three quarters of the eligible voters are non Hispan, are not Hispanic.
Okay, that was my understanding, thank you, um, so my, my follow-up question on that is. Um, given that that is the case, why are precincts thirty seven, thirty nine and one oh two split? They're split only between non-majority um Hispanic citizen voting age population. And so I'm, I'm very confused as to why we're splitting those, if you gave in your statement that the only reason for splitting those precincts was to. Ensure um that you are not diluting the Hispanic voting age population, but however, that only is meaning, is material for districts. Two, um, District Six and District One.
That could very well have to do with trying to balance the total populations within. The three district area that is predominantly not Hispanic, in other words, it's not. There aren't any Hispanics there to be affected, you're correct, by splitting a precinct, but it could be that a precinct is split. Uh, for some reason because it either uh is leading to a, a greater population imbalance within those three districts. Or it's entirely possible that the geography of city blocks as you understand them or. Roads and major divisions does not get reflected in census geography, in other words, the Census Bureau. Divides your city up into what it calls census blocks, but the definition of a census block is. Not what you think it is, it's not, it's not just a city block or a piece of territory that we would think of as the next. The, the, a cousin of a city block, some, some city blocks have very, very strange configurations. And that can sometimes introduce the, the, the situations where uh, it's necessary to split a precinct because a block. Has a very peculiar shape, uh, some, some census blocks will run along railroad tracks for a half a mile. Uh, you know, a hundred feet out from the tracks and just running along with no one there except possibly two houses at one point. And I can't explain it without showing an example, but that, that could well be the cause of it.
So when I'm looking at precincts specifically thirty seven and thirty nine, just as a for instance, those are both split between. Council District Four and Council District Three and we, you've acknowledged and we, we, we can indulge in the data that that is not um affecting the. Voting age population, when I look at the, the street view of that, um, I'll be honest, especially looking at precinct thirty nine. Looking at the street map view, I, I don't, I'm not seeing a lot of rhyme or reason there, uh, so Dr. Morrison, can you give me an answer as to why those, those precincts are split the way they are?
Uh, I can't give it to you without going back and taking a look at the details of it, but uh, that certainly sounds like one that if you. Would like to have the answer and uh, you know, you can uh wait maybe two or three days, I can, I can turn to my analyst and say, take a look at this and tell me why it happened. Uh, it's, it's not something where we can kind of pull it up on a screen and say, well, I see why that was done. Uh, there's a lot of backing and forthing that has to go on between census geography and the. The, the fact that there's no rhyme or reason uh to it may well appear that way on the map that you're looking at. And I, I simply can't give you an answer, you know, as I, as we sit here right now, but nonetheless, um. Keep in mind that even if there is no rhyme or reason, uh, and there is an inadvertent split of a. Uh, precinct which may have been something that was done initially and then just left split. Without unsplitting it later, just before the final plan was, but before other changes had been made, uh, it's possible that. If, if, if it's a problem, uh, if you have some time, we could take a look at it and say, what would happen if we. Gave it to one or the other district because we know it doesn't have any significant Hispanics in it, that's my presumption. Uh, and we could get you an answer in perhaps four or five days, but it's not something we can turn this around on a twenty-four hour basis.
Understood, um, and I'd like to point out that I'm, I'm simply echoing comments that were made at last Wednesday's meeting. Um, that was received, public, a public comment that was received at the time, I believe your answer was, we, we can't know that. But when, I, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling very much with this precinct splitting as a number of the, the community members have mentioned. And trying to understand the rationale behind these and I'm very interested in understanding before I'm, before I vote on this. Um, I, I want to know each precinct split, why did we split, split that precinct? Um, that is important to me to know uh before we take a vote. And I understand that we're not in front of this action today, so there is some opportunity of time of looking over at um, City Manager Lincoln to. To help us guide through that process, but I'm very much interested in knowing that, that answer before I vote on this.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison.
Councilman Campus, you have some comments?
I'll try to do this as politely as I can, Dr. Morrison, but I've heard several times tonight that. This map is as good as it can possibly get and now I've just heard comments that you're willing to possibly look at what it could potentially look like. Because it's maybe not where you think it should be, because you don't have an answer for what thirty nine. Should have looked like or why you did something and that sounds like that comment should have been maybe directed to your analyst and I just. I'm not one to pull punches, I will say exactly what's on my mind, I just am getting a lot of mixed answers from you. And I would ask that the next time you come, maybe bring your analyst and come with concrete answers, that's all.
If I could respond, um, I said at the outset that precincts are administrative geography. And they, as such, they can be sacrificed as we go forward. With the primary objectives that I said were absolutely to assure Hispanics, uh, the. Voting strength that they, that they could have and when I was first, when, when, when we did discuss this long ago. Uh, I was told that this plan was to be a least change plan and I said, part of the least change will be to preserve precincts insofar as we can. And the only reason that I was given to understand about precincts at that time was my own understanding. That when you change precincts, it's a costly thing for the city to have to redraw them. And there's nothing sacred about precinct boundaries in general, they may be much more important for this city. And its residents and if that's the case, um, I was, I, I'm not aware of that fact. I regard precincts as administrative geography that should not in any way interfere with. The primary effort to assure Hispanics are properly allocated into districts where their voting strength will be. Uh, as, as good as it could be and will also have the uh prospect of strengthening over time. As persons under eighteen reach voting age, that's part of what goes into this, so that would be my answer, it's, and I'm simply saying that. Uh, if you have the time and the resources, it's possible to go back and look at precincts. All over again and say, they are sacred here, I, I, I'm not, I'm agnostic about that, but that's not, that's not the way I proceeded. From what I was understood was the task when I undertook this starting many months ago.
Mayor, this, this uh comment is just for us as council members, but I think Mr. Uh, Dr. Morrison just hit on something that. We did not give direction to a loose redistricting plan in the preliminary stages of this process. Um, there was no direction from this council, in fact, that input was not taken several months ago. So just highlights the fact that we were not part of that discussion, um, so. Maybe this is why we're coming to a little bit of friction here, is that the expectation. By you, Dr. Morrison, was set by someone else other than council.
So do we have any further comment from uh, Dr. Morrison or? Councilman Milley, are, do you have any comments?
Yeah, this is Councilman Milley and I'm kind of actually in agreement with the way the council's going on this, just the frustration. Um, I don't like to see districts split up either, but uh, yeah, just try to make the best of it.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments? Any further guidance? Has a little speaking voice, there you go.
There you go, Rebecca Francic, three, one, one, four, West Wilcox Drive. I was on this council when we did the first great big redistricting and I just want you to know from a historical perspective. At that time, we recognized that we had districts, uh, precincts that needed to be split and we went to the county and we could not come up. With an agreement to split anything and so we left them the way they are, so I just want you to know. This has been before us again, it's very difficult to make those ten percent margins and keep your racial profiles where you want them.
Thank you, Ms. Francic, that context is helpful.
Thank you for your comments, um, go ahead.
Good evening, council, uh, John Kennedy, five twenty-three West Bonneville Street. I, I think uh, the friction that, that council member Roach is describing here stems from the process that we're using. Uh, in a sense, the city has given the public two weeks to analyze the map, to hear from Dr. Morrison. To discuss whether we want precincts split or we want a certain district be more compact or less compact. Um, and I submitted written comments uh proposing ways that we might avoid this in the future, having a longer. Process in which there is plenty of time for us to discuss as a community. Uh, what we'd like to see from a map that is, that co, that is within the bounds of the law, as, uh, we have to make sure we follow the bounds of the Washington Federal Voting Rights Acts. As uh, we have to make sure we follow the bounds of the Washington Federal Voting Rights Acts. But that would give the demographer time to address the suggestions that we're making here. Uh, right now, we're facing a week. And Dr. Morrison's already saying that he may not, you know, four or five days to get back with us about proposed changes. So, uh, for the next time that we go through this process, I hope that the city will craft a process that is much longer and provides a buffer so that we have time to make changes if we need to and not uh, run up against deadlines like we are right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, I do want to highlight that again, um, as Councilwoman Roach mentioned. Council was not exactly included in uh, the process until and and there was a request from our city staff of Dr. Morrison um, in time to provide us more, more time to review this. So again, um, as a council, we did not get enough notice to work with this. We were given, we were provided a deadline, um, but we were not giving enough time. Um, by everyone else outside of our group, of our city council. Um, we are working on a very short timeframe, sh- very short, short turnaround. And so we're trying to make the best of it, um, with your input, with input from our uh, council, with input from our legal council. Um, and so we want to make, we want to do right. We want to uh, make sure that we're doing right by our city, by our um, citizens or residents. And so, again, this is very in- important information from you. If anyone else wishes to make any further comment on this matter, please step forward to the podium.
I just wondered if you were going to address all the questions that I had asked about, you have District Three that is disjointed. And what are the consequences if there were to wait to allow the public ample opportunity to, to discuss?
Dr. Morrison, would you like to address some of the questions brought up by Mr. Bowman?
I understand what disjointed mean, what what you mean by disjointed. Uh, can you tell me what, what, what exactly you mean?
Sure, so District Number Three, there's a finger that goes up in between District Four and Five. There's a disjointed portion where District Five goes up and touches District Four and leaves a piece of District Three on an island surrounded by District Four and Five, where it is not touching the rest of District Three.
Um, I'll have to look at that, at the map itself, but is that, is that in the area right around where the two large uh, annex, uh, unan- uh, unannexed islands of territory are?
Fair fairly close, but approximately a half a mile from the closest. And
I mean, what, but it 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 interacts with those two, in other words,
No, it does not.
Or, I I'm not sure, I I I have to look, I don't have a map that I can see the detail, but I just wanted to know if that is in any way associated with the point that I made at the, at the pre- previous meeting. Where I said, the, the way, the, the, what I, what I said was the non-compactness that you see there, the i- the, and the failure to pass the eyeball test, let's call it that. Is that, is, are are you referring to something that could be described as part of the general fails to pass the eyeball test?
Uh, I I I would say no, there there's a, an apartment complex that has been added into District Five that creates a disjointed portion of District Number Three, where that it is disconnected.
Okay, then, I I must, I must not be talking about the the intent to assure that when either of those pieces of annex territory have to be added to one or another district, that the options are open to attach them either to one of the Hispanic concentration districts or to attach them to some other district that would not dilute Hispanics in any way. And that would, that, i- if it's not part of that game in that part of the map, then I'd appreciate it if somebody could show me exactly where it is that you're talking about, because I I can't see it on any map that I have here, and I I don't think I'd be able to see it on the screen.
Mr. Bowman, are you referring to uh, precinct one oh two that is south of I one eighty-two? And
I think if you'd send me a verbal description of it,
They minimize the screen.
Uh, I mean, I can't answer it live for you, but I will certainly take a look at it.
That's exact, okay.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, Dr. Morrison, he's referring to precinct one oh two and uh,
Forty, which is what?
It's uh, it's adjacent to precinct thirty-nine and precinct forty, and so there's a little jog of of District Number Five that enters into District Three. And trying to understand, because from our visual, that map that we have, it looks like an island, a District Three island is created in that precinct one oh two, am I saying that accurately, Mr. Bowman?
I I believe so, there's a apartment complex there that this, that it's drawing a circle around it.
Okay, I um, I can't give you an answer for sure, but I'm I'm thinking the likeliest answer is it's probably a a lack of correspondence between the geography that you know as being real and the census block geography. Uh, it, uh, uh, I'll take a look at it, and there may be a very easy way for me to look at that and say, let me show you the census block geography, and you'll see what happens when we use the census block geography. It may well be that that's what's causing it, if it looks, if it looks crazy, uh, that could well be what it is. But it's not something that is uh, clearly tied to either of those annexed islands, is that, that's what you're telling me?
Yeah, it is, it is not connected to either one of the unannexed islands, so appreciate that.
I'll take a look at that, that's, that's something I should be able to look up and possibly get you an answer in a day or so.
All right, we have comment from Councilmember Campos.
Yeah, just brief, I think Steve, this is, goes hand in hand with Councilman Maloney's comments is we want to, that, that geographical area. We want more, more answers.
Uh, I I appreciate that, it just, I I was watched very closely and tried to understand as the county went through this process. And with the same experts, um, guiding them, we were very, very specifically on, on probably all or close to, if not all, the meetings told that you cannot split precincts. And and completely don't understand the answer today. There we were, it was a very deliberate, you cannot, and and the end of, end of question. And now we're being told that, that really, it doesn't matter. And and so I'm, I'm very confused now watching two side-by-side processes of the same exact area and the same exact precincts. Being told two, um, opposing, um, answers by the same, uh, professionals, thank you for the opportunity.
Comment from our interim.
A couple of things, so I understand that if you remove the layer of the highway there, that you will see the District Three underneath there and that there wouldn't be the, a, a split precinct. It it does have relief, I guess, from, um, being, being islanded off. Not to say that that doesn't still look to the eye as uh, different. Um, the other thing that I would add is that when we look at the uh, ordinance from the last time that we did this and in talking to the, the county, it was their preference that we submit the uh, ordinance to them without splitting precincts. I don't know that, that doesn't get into the, the legalese into why you can split them or why you can't split them. But the, the folks that are implementing it ask that they not be split, that was one of the wherethes, I believe, in the the ordinance from the last, last time that this was done.
Thank you.
So, so just to clarify that point, um, uh, Mr. Lincoln, if I understood what you said correctly, the current districts as implemented after the lawsuit contain only whole, whole precincts? There are no split precincts right now, um, in our current districts?
So it looks like, and I'll defer to our, uh, expert who was there at the time, um, Ms. Franzig, uh, but uh, it looks like what, uh, how the process worked before is that the, uh, the original plan that, uh, the city put forth, uh, had split pre- precincts. Uh, went through the process, the federal judge, uh, went ahead and signed off on that plan. Uh, it looks like after that, the subsequent ordinance, uh, forty-three, forty-six was passed. Uh, the first original ordinance was in October two thousand sixteen, and then finally in May of two thousand seventeen. Uh, it looks like, uh, forty-three, forty-six was passed, which was a, uh, one of the wherethes, I think is pretty, uh, helpful, where it says the Franklin County Auditor, uh, requested that minor adjustments be made to the Pasco City Council District boundaries in order to simplify and minimize disruption in the boundaries for districts in the jurisdictions, in the other jurisdictions in creation of the voting precincts essential to the conduct of elections. So it sounds like it was just a, uh, and the, and both of the ACLU, because they were part of the consent decree, um, uh, was able to sign off on that, and it was an agreed order, so that the federal judge was able to then take this, uh, map that we currently have with no split precincts, so you'll just look in our code under voting districts, uh, there doesn't appear to be any split, uh, precincts. Uh, I, I am not even remotely, uh, uh, familiar enough to, uh, with election law to know how that process works. But, uh, my understanding is that, uh, our voting districts are what they are, uh, and as the, the experts, um, um, uh, Mr. Morrison has referred, uh, earlier, uh, that is something, uh, we, we draw our districts in that the precincts have to match. But then that is a cost, and that's something that the, the council would have to, or is that the city would have to, uh, uh, be involved in. But at the end of the day, I don't think it's a, uh, again, I don't want to talk out of school, but, uh, I don't, I think that's something that we get to uh, decide what our, our boundaries are, and then those, uh, precincts have to, uh, match that. But again, I I'm way out of my league here, so I'll stop before I say something I regret.
Right, so if I understood that correctly, so put it down to the preschool version for me, um, we had split precincts. We unsplit the precincts and made all the precincts whole, our current district maps have, have whole precincts across the board. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Well, apologize for, uh, finding all these, uh, split, uh, precincts. But, uh, they were just staring at us in the face of all these precincts, I've never seen it before. And so many, uh, maps that I've looked at or participated. Because I'm very concerned that the community has not been given ample time to come forward and and make their opinions heard, and, uh, and 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 I've heard a lot of them since this came out. And, uh, a lot of were just discouraged from coming out on, on the second, and then again today. Uh, my question is, um, and I think I know the answer, but, uh, I want to hear from the attorney, what would happen if we didn't meet the deadline of next week? And, uh, if we did, uh, give the community ample time and give the council ample time to take a vote on something they want to vote on. Uh, we've heard a couple of them, they don't want to vote on this map. And, uh, to make it fair for everybody, for the council to have a fair opportunity to vote on a map that they would approve and give the community an ample time to come across what is, uh, do we open up ourselves to liability, uh, because we don't meet the deadline? Or, or what happens if we decide to prolong this, uh, a couple of weeks or so? And then, uh, come back and see if we can give the demographer an opportunity to make some changes? And, uh, that is pleasing to the community, is pleasing to the council. And then that way we can all, uh, be happy when we, when it comes to vote again on, on, uh, on, uh, city council uh, positions, that we're all happy, that we all know what precinct we belong to, who we're voting for, and so on.
Oh, great, thank you, Mr. Franzig, no, I, that's a very fair question, and I, I get why, uh, folks are interested in the answer to that. Unfortunately, because of our situation, I'm not go, comfortable advising or, or letting, uh, that legal advice, uh, be public. Uh, but I will say this, uh, just know that, uh, uh, that is definitely something that, uh, we have taken very serious. And we, we, uh, are advising council on what those options are, uh, and, uh, certainly, uh, we'll make sure that we, uh, leave, leave no stone unturned.
Well, the community would not know if we are going to be given ample time to come in and, and, and ask more questions.
I I don't know, I I can, all I can tell you is that, uh, I'm going to make sure that I advise my client the, the best way I can so that, uh, we're, uh, as protective as possible, and, and, uh, that's certainly something that, uh, we're definitely looking into.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask if city staff has reached out to the state AG's office about whether it'd be possible to request an extension?
You guys are doing everything you can to get me to give legal advice in public, and I'm not going to do it, but I will say this, I have, uh, we have made sure that, uh, any um, any advice that we can get, uh, we have pursued that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Ferguson, any further questions or comments?
Anyone else want to make for, Mr. Ferguson dance, I mean, you know?
All right.
I'm so sorry, I don't know anything about what the legal landscape is right now, but when Yakima refused to meet the deadlines, it cost them three point five million dollars. That's not how I want to spend my tax money.
All right, um, thank you for context. Any further comment? Hearing no further comment on this matter, um, as you can tell, we have a lot of work to do on this. And we definitely need to, um, discuss further, uh, what our best options are to avoid any, um, future litigation. Um, so with that, we do have some time, and if I'm not mistaken, we do have an opportunity for another, uh, public, um, comment session. If I'm not mistaken, in another session.
Uh, no, Madam Mayor, at this point, uh, the, uh, based on the statute twenty-nine A seventy-six, uh, the, the, the the public hearing requirement has been met, uh, the public comment, uh, hearing is, is, uh, been satisfied. And so, um, the, uh, it's currently scheduled, this item is currently scheduled to come back to council, uh, November fourteenth. And then the council can, uh, make some decisions and, and we'll be able to, uh, provide some more information so council can make their decisions.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you again, everyone, for your comments and your considerations and your feedback. Um, all your input will be taken into consideration, um, and again, with guidance, proper guidance from our legal council, we will move forward, um, at the date mentioned. And with that, uh, we will be taking a five-minute break, uh, so to return at nine fifty-five to, uh, finish our agenda, thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone, for giving us a little break between agenda items. We will move forward with. Our next item on the agenda. We are on item ten. Ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. Item A, resolution number forty two sixty nine bid award for transmission. Main West Pasco Water Treatment Plant to Zone Three, Director Worley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tonight, this presentation is going to be short and sweet in more than one way. And with Maria Sarah, our CIP manager.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This will be very brief. We are requesting your action to. Award a bed to. Total Site Services, who was our lowest bidder for the Transmission Main, which connects the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant with Zone Three of our water system. This bid came in a million dollars below the engineer's estimate, and it was extremely competitive eleven bids. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very brief, very brief. Any questions from council? No questions, no comments? Wow, very brief. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution number four two six nine, awarding bid number two one two three eight. For the Transmission Main West Pasco Water Treatment Plant. To Zone Three Project to Total Site Services of Richland, Washington. And further authorize the city manager to execute the the contract documents and allowing all necessary budget adjustments.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And I'm sorry, didn't hear council member. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item B, resolution forty two seventy. Setting public hearing for Snake River Agricultural LLC Right-of-Way Vacation, Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. This vacation request for right of way involves maybe a little less than a third of an acre at the southeast corner of A Street in Oregon. If approved, the resolution will set Monday, December fifth as a date for council to. Conduct a public hearing and make a decision on the vacation request.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions, comments from council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move to approve resolution number four two seven zero, setting seven P M. Monday, December fifth, twenty twenty two, as a time and date for a public hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of South Oregon Avenue. Located at the southeast corner of East A Street and South Oregon Avenue.
Thank you. I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. And it passes unanimously. With that, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, and I have. Word from our staff that we will be moving item C, resolution number forty two seventy one to unfinished business. So we will move on to item D, resolution number forty two seventy two Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Preconstruction Loan Application. For Butterfield W T P Improvements Project, Director Worley.
Thank you again. I'd like to turn this over to Maria one more time.
Good evening again. We are requesting your approval to submit a loan application. From Department of Health, and this will be for funding preconstruction activities related to Butterfield. Water Treatment Plan improvements. Um, this is a maximum award per agency of half a million dollars with zero percent interest. And we require, we are required as part of our application to show. Of authorization from the governing body. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion? Thank you.
I move to approve resolution number four two seven two, authorizing submission of the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Application for the Butterfield Water Treatment Plant. Improvements project for a loan amount of up to five hundred thousand dollars.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Campos. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. With that, we will be moving on to item eleven, unfinished business. Item A, cannabis discussion. Considerations for retail sales, wholesale, manufacturing, et cetera, within Pasco, and we have Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. This issue, of course, involves a continuing discussion on retail cannabis in in particular. I'm going to borrow a lot of my present. My statement from the agenda report. So of course, the agenda report contains a summary of the comments. That were received at the two listening sessions that were conducted by council. And a map of the buffers, at least as they exist existed several weeks ago. And reflecting state law. The discussion portion of the agenda report. Summarizes at least what staff feels has been reached by consensus at the council level. Number one, of course, is that council intends to possibly repeal the ban on retail cannabis. As you proceed down the bullet points contained in the discussion. Our. Perception of council's consensus is that consideration of the C two, the downtown zoning district. C three, the heavier commercial retail zoning district. And all three industrial zoning districts are appropriate for the possible location of retail cannabis sales. Staff also has. The perception that a conditional use permit process is appropriate for project permitting. Because of the reasons listed underneath that bullet number two. The hearing examiner, of course, will render the decision. It does provide direct mailing notice to affected property owners, at least within three hundred feet of the property. Requires or allows the possibility of requiring conditions on approval. And then establishes state regulations on the record. And council has, I believe, summarized that. There is no interest, at least currently, in relaxing the prohibition against growing raw cannabis products. Or the processing of those products as you would in perhaps a retail or, excuse me, an industrial zoning district. The discussion concludes. By asking if the Planning Commission's role in the zoning code amendments will be as normally is done now. Will this issue go before the Planning Commission? Will they make a recommendation to council? And if so. We're relying on the. Perceptions under the discussion as guiding points for the Planning Commission as well as for staff. As these issues work their their way through the process, we anticipate that. Perhaps early in the year, we will bring a possible ordinance back to council for consideration, depending on direction received by council tonight.
Thank you. Comments, Mayor Portemaloni?
Thanks, Mayor Brajas. So I think we've all heard from literally hundreds of people at this point in time and comments either made in these chambers. Submitted by email through the Ask Pasco app at our two listening sessions. I think we've all heard heard lots, lots of input from the community. And I want to say first off, just really appreciate engagement from the community and telling us how you feel and telling us what you think. I know sometimes it feels like we're a pretty arbitrary body up here, you know, making decisions on a whim. But we really take take into account and weigh all these conversations and and the things you send us reports and studies. I I've read, gosh, two dozen, maybe more studies. You know, these are these are formerly published journal articles and such that I'm reading, so it's this is not. You know, I I certainly have not taken this this matter lightly. And I I I feel assured that my fellow council members have not either. So I guess we're we're. I'll I'll give you a very brief synopsis of my thoughts. I could spend two hours giving a. A summary of the information I've heard and and things I've said or things I've read, but I'll keep it. I'll keep it much briefer than that, of course. And where I'm coming down to is ultimately looking at, you know, private rights. What right do people have in private property and their private and their private lives? And for me, a ban has to have a compelling reason. We have a lot of split community opinions in the community. I think we our community survey was clear. We're about half. We're split between half and half between. About people in favor and people not. At our community forums, we heard about half. Our written comments, about half. We've heard the we we've heard from downtown business owners. We've heard from other community members. We've heard from all sorts of people from all sorts of different walks of life, and we keep on hearing. Split. So I think that's something that's really, really interesting and really important. So when we're talking about, you know, again, compelling reasons for 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 a ban is that. You know, that certainly that we don't have consensus in the community that there needs to be, that that there is a that there's an objection or the need for a ban. I was gonna skip some of this stuff. So, you know, we've talked heard about, you know, why are we doing this? That fun. At the end of the day, we've been requested to by our community. We had people come in front of us and say, let's make a decision, either uphold the ban or repeal the ban. And so that's why we're having this discussion. There's no there's no driver from council where where some of us are motivated to 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 go forward with this one way or the other. This was not our goals. This is not a primary discussion of our council retreats. It really is a request from the community with our new council. Do we stay the direction of the previous council or do we not? So finally, I guess I'll say is that the other aspect that would really be compelling to me and why I spent most of the time when I'm researching and I'm talking to people is. What what are the what are the potential negatives for especially our kids, but our community at large? We heard a lot of comments about the negative impacts of cannabis. I don't know whether that's true or not. I hear a lot. I see a lot of mixed studies. But I think we can all agree that cannabis is in our community today. There are people who are using it. There are kids who are using it. That was true when I went to school in the Tri-Cities. That's true today. It does not appear that the ban has fixed that. In fact, studies, including one that was shared with us by the police chief. Show that use rates in children are declining. And that when we when Washington State lifted its when allowed for retail sale of cannabis. Use rates in kids went down substantially. It became harder for kids to get a hold of the get get a hold of cannabis. The studies are are excruciatingly clear on this, and this is again, as someone who's applied math major, I I read these studies. I produce studies like this. I read statistics. So appreciate the chief sending us that that study. I believe that legalization ultimately of retail sales will negatively will drive down some of our black market, make it harder for kids to get a hold of this. Liquor Control Board has shown that compliance rate of of cannabis retailers is the way higher, almost what's twenty percent higher than than tobacco sales. And it's got something like ten or fifteen percent better than liquor stores and bars. So it will do a better job than we are currently doing of keeping liquor out of children's hands, something we know is very damaging, very devastating to to children. So at the end of this, where I'm where I'm proposing at this point in time is we've I believe we've overthought this. Well, I think we have one front of us from from my perspective, and I'm I'm happy to be wrong on this, but from my perspective. I think we need a simple up down vote. Either we treat cannabis as a retail product. And allow it in zones that love retail to provide to prevent any concentration in an area like downtown, three stores or more in downtown. We heard from everyone in the community that that would be too much. So fair enough. And we either so we either relate allow it in all zones that allow retail, held to the standards of Liquor Control Board and state law. Just like the bars and liquor stores are. Or we decide to continue the ban and not allow retail of retail cannabis in the city of Pasco at all. We can nitpick where it's going to go, but really what we're hearing from people is not in my backyard is the big biggest complaint we're hearing. And I don't think there's anyone who wants to have it all concentrated in their backyard. So the only fair way to look at that is say, look, if this is either retail and this will improve by improve the community by driving down the black market. Allowing people to to have their private right to to make the decision they'd like to make, either to partake, to purchase or not. And just and just leave it at that and let the and 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 just make a decision based on off of that just out of that. That's the difference. That's my opinion that I'd like to propose to council. And that's what I'd like to see staff draft up is just a simple up down. We need to make this decision before it goes to Planning Commission. It is not fair for us to put the burden of Planning Commission to go hear all the same comments from the same people we already heard it from. Drafting the exact language. Perhaps that's a good role for for Planning Commission. Perhaps not. I'd like to have further discussion, but I think that they should at that point in time, it'd be implementing whatever can council has. Has decided if we choose to lift the ban. If we choose to maintain the ban, then of course, Planning Commission doesn't have anything to do there. Things stay exactly as is. Um with things stay exactly as is. Um again, I could talk another thirty minutes or longer about all the reasons why and all the specific details. I'm happy to share some of the studies. Um that that I that I've looked at, the people that the public has provided to me that I've read. Um but at the end of the day, that's that's where my thought process is, and that's where I believe we should move forward on is is up-down vote on lifting the ban across the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Serrano.
Thank you. Um I'll respond to the some some of the things that you mentioned and then bring in a couple of thoughts that I had uh beginning of the meeting. Uh first, I absolutely agree, we cannot pass the buck to planning commission. This is a council decision that needs to be. Brought by the seven people, well, the five plus the other two, um with by the seven elected individuals. That said, I I think I have some significant disagreement. One, an all-out uh any retail, I think, is way too expansive. It's something that we haven't discussed as a group. And quite frankly, I I personally believe it's too expansive. I I think that uh there's been strong opposition. To your point, it's maybe split, maybe leaning slightly one way or another. But I I don't think that we can go that far based on the data we've gathered. The second point that I think is most critical, you mentioned the council goals, I look at community safety. We have Chief Roski as well as uh Sheriff Raymond, who came here and gave us both co- public comment that in their estimation, in their experience. That this will render uh further uh opening to further drugs. Whether that's true or proven, I don't know, but I certainly don't want to be the test case, and I don't want to be the one. Who looks at the chief, who looks at the sheriff and says, you guys were right after we've proven this, so. For those reasons, I'm extremely concerned. In addition, and I'm gonna turn to Mister Ferguson, because I think you have this data point. We have, I believe, four permits that have been issued by Liquor Cannabis Board to the city of Pasco. Not to the city of Pasco, but to applicants that could uh conduct business in here. I I believe that's the number we talked about. It it.
Uh it looks like uh there's uh based on my understanding of the chart, it looks like there's currently three licenses that have been. Uh applied for and there I think there's up to four in Franklin County, so uh I may be speaking out of school there. Uh I didn't uh have that chart. I've got the chart here, but um uh yeah, so uh between between four.
At least three or four, if not four. Uh I am concerned that uh if we do open the door for one. Fundamentally, we open the door for all. Um and whether or not that means we place at various locations throughout the city. And that's a good business practice, I don't know. Um but I am very concerned, listening specifically to those who police this community. Tell us that there's a significant amount of potential danger and risk, that we are, we would be making a bad decision, not only allowing the retail stores. But allowing them throughout the city. Um the other element, and I I don't know that we've addressed this, I think you mentioned this, Mister Ferguson, at one point. There's the social equity component of the Liquor Cannabis Board, which is allowing. Uh I believe more vague permitting, if I recall, I I'm not gonna use that term as the statutory term, but uh fundamentally. Individuals who have had uh some type of possession or other drug charges, uh from what I understand of reading the law. Are allowed to operate and it it gives them a more expansive reach. That is, I don't believe they actually have to apply to a specific thing, or if. If the number of permits are granted in a jurisdiction, they can exceed that through a social equity. I could be wrong on that, but my understanding was, let's say, we're allocated four, we have three, we get that fourth, we could have two or three or four more. Social equity permitting. Uh so I think there's a concern too, that if we allow this in all parts of the city. We're then not running the risk of having three to four shops, it may be five, six or seven. Um uh you know, I know Councilman Campos has mentioned allow the market to dictate what it will, and certainly, seven probably is not tenable here. But uh fundamentally, I I absolutely oppose uh taking a an all-out blanket, put a retail where it is. Uh any retail position. Uh I I am not amenable to that. I I can tell you that my vote, based on the comments we've received, both on based on the information we've received. I don't see that being the right move for Pasco. So if we're gonna go there, I can tell you my vote's there, and I don't see it changing. Uh if we wanna talk about whittling it back, I think there's value in having that conversation. I still think there's a safety concern and whether or not that hits our fourth goal, which is community safety. I don't believe that it promotes significant economic vitality. I could be wrong if enough shops open. And to the point of rights, we're not banning the con- consumption here. We're banning. Uh what's been banned is the ability to operate a facility here, uh retail business, and so. I I I don't see that as equivalent to banning the rights of consumption, so. For those reasons, I I unquestionably oppose the proposition. Um I I'm I'm open to further discussion if we're willing to whittle it back to certain locations, being zoning regulations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments from council? Councilman Campos.
I'll weigh in here. I think Councilman Serrano and Council Mayor Protem Maloney both bring up great points. Um so I'll just. Throw this out just for discussion points instead of really having one way or the other, cause again, both of these arguments have merit. Um. Being a council member that basically lives in direct proximity of the downtown area, every decision we make affects me directly. When we made a decision about the Thunderbird Hotel, I personally saw an influx of homeless people. Um when we talk about police policing activity and efforts, I see that every day in the downtown area. Got a comment tonight about um homelessness at a particular church. Um I would wager that that church probably stays vacant for most of the time. Outside of maybe some Bible studies, outside of maybe some uh congregation meetings on Sunday and services. What I'm hearing all the way throughout all of some of the other items that we've touched is that when you have a business that is viable and thriving. You see homelessness go away. Not necessarily go away, they they get displaced, obviously. In this case, for that particular church, if they were there twenty-four seven, would the homelessness choose their property to encamp? I I would wager no, and the same thought process applies to this. If we're talking about. Putting efforts and cleaning up our downtown, which we've heard plenty of public comment on that. I think that this could be a potentially good move. I think that the comments about us making broad efforts to try to improve the downtown area. Are maybe misguided, because again, if that's the case, why did Rite Aid close their doors? Why did Bank of America close their doors? What actions are we doing to really support business? And then meanwhile, we've lost several large businesses down there. It has nothing to do with marijuana. It has what we're doing with right now. Uh and maybe what we're doing right now is not being proactive enough and getting businesses down there that are attracting. Foot traffic, regardless of what they're actually um, you know, selling. And I'm not saying that we should open the doors for illicit drugs, but you know. A a bar is probably not gonna do it, right? You might get thirty, forty people uh peak night in that those retail spaces. Um the multitude of dress shops that we've got down there are only gonna generate traffic during homecoming dance, prom seasons, right? Why, how come we don't have people down there twenty-four seven? What's the driver? Think this could be a good fit, and again, this is coming from somebody that this will directly impact. Whether it's positive or negative, and I'm willing to roll the dice on that downtown area, and I think it'll benefit me. I think the homeless people that I have to interact with on a day-to-day basis, I think they're gonna find somewhere to go. I don't think that they're going to be welcome in a business front down there. Um and so, you know, Councilman Serrano's point. I think that maybe some specific zoning could be beneficial um to Councilman Mayor Protem Maloney's point. I I think that absolutely has merit in letting the free hand of the market determine, you know, Kennewick had this issue with the strip club they put up. There was a lot of discussion about whether or not that was the right thing. That place is closed, there's a Bible store there now. You know, and and a weird case of irony. Um. It is a very tough decision, and I hope the public understands that we are not, our minds aren't made up specifically. We have a lot of discussion. That we've had between us council and our SMEs, and we do take every really, every piece of public comment very seriously. With that, I I kinda wrap up my comments, but I I'm I'm ready to roll the dice.
Thank you for your comments. Councilwoman Roach, do you have any input?
I mean, I do, but it's also ten twenty-one and everybody's here for this, so I will weigh in a little bit. I will say that back in uh the early spring. When we had our council retreat, we did not, we did not have this as a goal. It was not something that the public had brought to us as. A concern or a priority, and from that time to this time, it has been raised to us. And we have taken it very seriously to create public listening sessions, surveys, space and during council meetings for public comment. And uh in one, from my observation, I would say Mayor Protem Maloney, I. I did not hear, I did not take away what you took away, which is a fifty-fifty split. I've taken away that since um Initiative Five O Two, which I was a resident of Pasco at that time. Um to me, what I heard at that time was just a hard no altogether. Like the community was so, it was a, there was a moral, there was an immoral aspect to it. Um to that no. And what I'm seeing and observing now in the comments. There has been a huge shift to me, and the shift is that I hear in those public comments that have been made. For months now, um and that has been that the. That the stigma that used to exist with cannabis in the past has started to decrease. And so even the people that are not for a retail cannabis store. Have shifted in their perspective to, I'm okay if people want to use it and wanna use it legally and wanna use it medicinally. But I just don't want the retail cannabis store. And as I'm listening to that, it is, it's a different comment than what was made initially. And so, you know, I've been grateful for the process and and this is why, you know, going back to redistricting, this is why. Having a long public comment period is important, because it does inform our decisions. It does inform how you show up and tell, let us know what you want. Um you know, as to the where do we have it? Um what, how is it allowed? What's the process around it? I think I'm still looking for some more guidance from city staff, um from public on. What are the uh, you know, acceptable places, zones to have retail cannabis? Because it doesn't sound like the public is opposed to cannabis and and you know, to bring up your comment. You know, that was one of the things that I think in the past existed, uh Councilmember Campos, was that. This was, there was like an inextricable, well, drugs and homelessness are like this. And I feel like this process has really shown us that retail cannabis is for a different sort of consumer. And it is not inextr- inextricable. It it is separate. Homelessness is its own issue. Um that we're obviously faced with, as we heard from our our resident um earlier this evening. And we still have that work to do, and while it's still here, it's not connected to this issue. And so I want the public to be careful that these are two separate things, and while substance abuse is still an issue. We're noticing from informed people like uh Chief Roski that. That has more to do with some of those harder drugs that are um illicit drugs that are being consumed. So I guess my. You know, where I'm at is I I think I've heard from the public and I've really waited um and deliberated. Taken seriously every time, every night we've had a public council meeting and heard every single person, read every single email. And made a decision not to make any decision until we get to that point, and it sounds like our council's ready to. Get to a decision-making point. So I'm in favor if this council's consensus is that we need to, you know. Take a vote, then I'm I'm with you guys on that.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman uh Campos.
Yeah, well said, Councilwoman Roach. I think um, you know, tho- that those issues are are separate. Um you know, something that I I think just from my perception is two-thirds of the comments. Not two-thirds, I hear a strong yes and a strong no, and then I hear kinda split down the middle at a yes, but not somewhere, right? And I think, you know, it is an appointed official, instead of an elected official, you know, you guys are really. In that hot seat where you're you're, we're we're all acting as a voice of people who chose us. Outside of this. I'm I'm acting as a voice of the people I represent, but they didn't choose me for this position, right? And so I I still think that that looks like sometimes when we're faced with these hard decisions, we have to make a gut check and make that decision for the public. Cause we can't continue to kick this back, and I think that's what Mayor Protem Maloney's comment really is 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 looking at is. That people who were down that middle, yes, but not my backyard, well, we have to choose whose backyard it goes into. That's the tough part.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Okay, um. One of the things that has come up for me too is just the thinking about the fact that this is now something that is regulated by. The Liquor and Cannabis Control Board, and this is something so different than what we were discussing when I Five O Two first was passed. And so we're not a test case. We're different, because we've already had many cities go before us, so we. You know, there's lessons to be gleaned from that, and I think we should do that and have that inform our process. But I also think there's something that we haven't discussed as a council, and that is that, you know, society, American society has already. Made it permissible to consume alcohol, and that is a norm and that is part of, you know, it's part of everything. It's part of watching football, right? And so. The regulatory body that we have is the same for cannabis as it is for liquor, and one of the things that has arisen for me in this. Um public comment period is that there's an aspect of this for me as a council member that feels like. This moratorium, this ban, however you wanna phrase it, feels discriminatory against a certain type of business. Whether you agree with it or not, right? I mean, it may be unsavory to certain people, and there are businesses like that, but this. This is a, you know, state-approved, uh voter-approved, and now hearing public comment, it sounds like the. The re- residents of Pasco have really shifted their perspective on what retail cannabis is, and I'm hearing that.
Thank you for your comments. Um Councilmember Milne, do you have any comments you'd like to share?
Uh yes, thank you, Mayor. Um yes, this is again, a very difficult subject. I know when you add in economic, religious, moral. Uh beliefs in all this, it's um definitely di- difficult. I do understand the the different viewpoints. I do believe that we should vote on it, not pass any of it to the planning commission. And I'm not a lawyer, but I do believe Councilman Serrano said it best, and he echoed my viewpoints overall on this. So I'm waiting for a vote and see how this all shakes down, but uh I hope if it does become a yes, then we repeal the ban that uh we would limit it to certain areas of town. Not everywhere. Um but I'm s- looking forward to a vote and seeing how it goes down.
Thank you for your comments. Wow, um how do I follow up with that? You know, there's there's been so much opportunity, so much input, so much information. From you, the community, and we apprec- appreciate that. It's like everyone else has said. It's provided us with information and guidance on what to do, how to follow through. Unfortunately, there's one other council member that is not here to be able to provide his input. Um. But again, taking into consideration all the information that has al- already been provided, the input. Um and perspectives from everyone sitting up here. Um. I'd just like to echo what everyone has said. We do need to now implement a um. A vote and move this uh as it should. Um. We've received again the input from our police officers, from fire department, from everyone that is at stake. We've also received information from uh the community. Um a lot of the information, a lot of the emails that I've received, a lot of the input that I've seen is. Um it's retail. Um. One of the retails, one of the aspects of this particular retail is that is highly controlled. Um outside of this body, outside of city. It is highly controlled by the government. Um. And with that, I mean, I don't wanna say too much anymore. Um you've heard all our input. Um I think it's now. I think it's now, um I think it's now the opportunity to, to, to take a vote. Um, whether we take a vote now, we wanna give all council to be present, to provide their input, um.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may, I'm not sure what we'd be voting on exactly. Um, are we voting on just a concept? Um, are we voting on a specific area or specific limitations? Uh, we just simply don't have anything in front of us I don't think is sufficient to vote. Um, one of the reasons why I made sure to make a very clear statement about what I was, would like staff to present um is because I think that we need to provide staff that level of direction if we're gonna look for something in front of us. Um, I don't know, and maybe um, maybe Mr. Lincoln or Mr. Ferguson can help us out. Um, is this something where we can make a conceptual vote up or down and um and then follow up with, with, with with um the details? Cause I think that if we, if we do not provide adequate direction to staff before we vote and vote on something that's pretty clear, I think that we will continue to gain the same level of in- feedback and engagement from the community that we've been getting, which is something that I, I think I'm ready, I, I've, I've, I've heard enough. Um, I don't believe significant more co- public comment would help me make, make decision here. And so, I, I do think that we need to provide staff some sort of direction.
Thank you. So to wrap up my comment.
I apologize, I thought we were.
To wrap up my comment, you're correct. Um, we are both working on input, feedback to and from um our staff on the next steps. Um, we do have comment from Councilmember Campos or not anymore.
I was just gonna bounce something off, cause I'm, I'm trying to follow along too, I think what I've heard is potentially a blanket statement, open it all up and then concise and is, then this question should go to staff. Is that enough direction for you guys to maybe propose two different models, or is that too vague?
I would, I would lean towards it being too vague. And, and I, I say that with uh if, if the desire of the council would be to uh pass a resolution to direct staff to create an ordinance, that could be uh a, a vote where then the, the, the details can be further fleshed out, but I think too the um, the, the item that was uh up for discussion, talking about the, the zoning in particular, whether or not a conditional use permit is desirable and um the, the, the areas where you would want it to be um set back from parks, sorry, the um say, excuse me, the buffers, yeah. And then uh whether or not at all the planning commission is in, in, involved in that process, I think that it, it sounds like you're wanting to at least give staff the direction to up, up-down, bring back um a, an ordinance. Then you'd have the discussion about how specific in the, the weeds you wanna go in those, those particular items, but um, also understanding you likely want staff to make sure this is progressing on a, on a fairly reasonable timeline and, and make sure that we keep the process moving and that we're not the ones holding up uh, the, the will of council here, so, did I miss anything?
No, I would just echo those same uh comments in the sense that uh it, we have a code provision um that uh that bans uh the current retail uh marijuana. And so, um if uh there's gonna be next steps to removing that from the code, the only way to get that out of the code is through an ordinance. Uh, and the only way to uh draft an ordinance is to know what exactly we're gonna do, so then there's a lot of uh lot of room there, it sounds like, and I think that was uh very evident from the comments here. So I think uh what uh the interim city manager is proposing uh would be best because I think that gives council an opportunity to take a vote on whether they want uh to come back with something and what do they want to come back with. That's something that uh, that uh resolution can um can help flush out. Uh, it may be uh something that uh the council has to work through on the fly to s- to determine exactly what that resolution uh and direction will be to staff uh to come back with, so, cause it sounds like there's a pretty broad spectrum of uh direction that folks wanna go. So, but in order to get a quote up or down vote, um you can't do that uh with an ordinance uh to take something out of the code without having to figure out what else that means. The way you get an up and down vote is to do a resolution um to give staff direction.
Comments from Councilmember Roach and then Councilman Campos.
I would just say to give direction to staff, um and this is as an individual council member, the industrial zones to me are fair game, uh if council's in favor of that. Uh, what is not is a conditional use permit. Uh, from my process of being eight years on the planning commission, what I have seen with the public and with planning commission is that even when there is a permissible uh building allowed, such as an apartment building, that is the most common one. And over and over and over again, the public will turn out, and not just the public, but even elected officials will turn out against that apartment building because there is a certain stigma against apartment buildings. And so what I would hate to happen is that if we're gonna go forward and do this um, that we put a conditional use permit and then stigma and bias then prevent somebody who does have a license and who is abiding business member with the regulatory process and all that is going to be prevented from doing their business because of public and elected officials and hearing examiner. And I, I don't know if that's your experience, uh Councilmember Campos, but I would not be in favor of a conditional use permit if we were going forward this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. I was going to do that up. Thanks for staff for giving clarity on what we need to try to streamline. I same mindset, I think no conditional use, ah it's highly regulated, the liquor control board has, you know, plenty of hoops that people have to jump through to, you know, be issued a permit and there's a finite number, so I think that in and of itself is the conditional use, um. I, I, I think industrial is probably fair game and C two. Just off the top of my head.
Thank you. Comments from Director White?
I just wanna remind council that um the planning commission isn't involved in conditional use permit processes any longer, it's done by the hearing examiner. And uh that the hearing examiner process does involve something that I think is very important, that's notice to people within three hundred feet of the possibility of uh any given use that requires a conditional use permit.
Comments from um Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you. Um, I agree with the uh, with the lack of need for a conditional use permit, it'll just be relitigated every single time this comes up and it'll be relitigated in front of hearing examiner instead of in front of council. Um, so I think we make a decision, we need to make that, we need, we just need to make the decision and again, um and, and, and live with the consequences thereof. I will say that part of why, why I'm suggesting that uh we look at um a more broad lifting um is really the experience of Spokane. I went up there, um I talked to a council member up there, I talked to their police captain um and received considerable dialogue. I asked questions, I stated no opinion. Um, and simply put, um what their experience was is that they would if, if, th- that they have not found there to be a need to put it in a particular area. They have retail, they have it in strip malls and you wouldn't even know the difference, right? I think we've seen some pictures of that. So when you see some of that, um what their experience was is that it was a really big to-do when they first allowed it after the initiative passed. And then after that, they just stopped worrying about it. And they don't, they haven't, they say, they say it's been six, seven, eight years since they've heard any complaints from the public, um. And so what they found was, and they basically allow it just about anywhere. There is no pro- prohibitions for where exactly they allow it. Um, so their, their experience was, you know, if they had to do it again, they, um, they ca- that council member said, I would, I would just worry about it a little less. Um, make sure we're having a good public conversation and just treat it like retail, um. The issues that the police captain was saying that they have, it's at the Conoco on the corner, it's at gas stations, it's at certain motels, it's at certain hotels. It's at certain um mini-marts. Um, the issues they have with police are never the cannabis stores. Um, and it turns out that they said that they just redirected the funds over to deal with the harder drugs. Um, any funds they receive for the, for the cannabis. So that's, that's some of the basis as to why I'm suggesting um everywhere, everywhere. I just wanted to add that piece, cause I, I forgot to do so earlier. So I would say that I'm not interested in doing a conditional use permit, I don't think it's necessary given the liquid wa- control board requirements, um. Yeah, that's, that's a big point, point I'd like to make there. Thank you.
Thank you again for your comments, um Councilman Serrano.
Or I'm sa- or I'll remain the dissenting voice here, I think the conditional use permit at a minimum for the additional notice brings value. I think having an outside opinion, uh, no offense, Mr. Ferguson, but an additional attorney to bring eyes on the subset of standards that it, it abide by would be valid. I think it's helpful. Um, that said, what I hear from the two council members to my right is, is if we start opening up with industrial, maybe that's the place to go, uh, you know, at least a test spot. Again, I, I, I fully oppose just opening it up. Um, I think we at least need some test case in our community. Um, recognizing the similarities and differences of other eastern Washington cities. I do think there's value in, in opening up if we're, if we're going to vote to open it up. And I'm still not there. Um, if we're going to vote to open it up, I think it needs to have some limitations and some constraints. Uh, if we're not gonna utilize a, a planning process, so be it but at least through the zoning process and allowing certain places to determine whether or not this is an economic viability issue. You know, maybe it opens and two, two years later, it's, it's gone because it doesn't work, right? Maybe it's the best thing we brought in, we won't know. But to open it up throughout town, I think is, is unwise and, and premature. Um, I think we should contemplate, I, I like the concept of bringing it in to the industrial zone um and moving out from there depending on viability.
Thank you again for your comments. With that, do you need further guidance? Do we need to narrow it down to how we're gonna move forward and I see a nod?
So, one, so, uh, one of the things that we can do is craft a resolution, cause it sounds like there's still some uh, and, and that resolution process can, can take place uh in council chambers, I mean, that can, we can amend that as we go. Uh, so we can bring back, it sounds like, uh, a resolution uh to move forward with an ordinance that would uh ru- I guess lift the ban, this is what I'm hearing, lift the ban and uh industrial and potentially C two?
That is the majority of the comments that we've received, industrial and/or C two.
Clarify, I think C two has been the majority of our comments. We, as council, deviated from that slightly by mentioning industrial, but I, I recognize all the public comments that are heavily regarding C two, those who are in favor of.
Again, um you are correct, you are correct. A lot of the comments did mention C two.
I, I think the only other buffer that we'd wanna address, or sorry, we'd wanna address buffers if, if C two would be part of that conversation, which we can include in the uh staff recommendation when we bring it back for the next workshop. Not the next workshop, because that wouldn't be something we could probably turn around, but early in twenty twenty-three would be the next opportunity for us to bring back this, you know, a more fleshed out. Um, given the number of items that are on your agenda, since we even had to pull tonight, apologies for how long it took to get to this. Um, and I'll save my comments for the next item.
When you bring that back, can you bring a heat map that displays the overlays of the potentially permissible zones? You know, especially if we have an optional ordinance of industrial or C two or both. Just to make sure that the maps, everything's grayscale and then only those particular zones. I, I know we've got our maps in here, but they're pretty complex and there's a lot of moving parts, but it'd be helpful to just see those specific zones spotted.
If that's not too much to ask, thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Roach? Just looking for clarification from city staff that we're going to go through the process of doing a resolution first before getting, waiting into zoning language. Okay, I'm seeing lots of heads nodding, so.
Yes, it would be a resolution to then draft an ordinance and as we do that, then we'll ask to get all of the specifics worked out.
And will the resolution process be in twenty twenty-two, or are you also suggesting that that be in twenty twenty-three?
I, I would recommend that you wait until twenty twenty-three, given the number of items that still have to come before you. However, if that's the desire of council to have it this year, that part will, will do our best to make room to have it on the agenda.
I guess that remains to be.
Now, I, just gonna butt in here, I think there's a lot of business to cover throughout the remainder of the year. Again, we've kinda you know, it could fit into public safety, it could fit into economic vitality, but it doesn't, you know, there are some pressing things, you know, we John Kennedy brought up some good points when he canvassed neighborhoods, they didn't know that uh redistricting was happening, they were so focused on the cannabis. Cannabis is important, don't get me wrong, but as we've pointed out, us as council didn't bring that to the public, public brought it to us and we thought it had merit and we're weighing the, the thing here. I think interim city manager Lincoln has got a good point, I think that we oughta just this is not a priority for us, we've done a lot of legwork, we've established, I think, the direction we wanna go. Putting it off for a few more months isn't gonna make or break the city. And at, in that time, I imagine that there may be some questions between the seven of us, we'll be able to ask staff and maybe, maybe we'll be able to get some clarity on our next steps.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem Maloney, do you have any input on that in particular, waiting, putting it off until twenty twenty-three?
Oh, I'd like to get it off our plate. Um, I understand city staff's comments and I appreciate the, the, the callback to, we have priorities, this isn't one. So, um, we need to prioritize the rest of this year on business that we have to, have to complete to close out the year. Um, and city staff has already um pulled pretty tight. I think that's a summation of what I'm hearing from my fellow council members, so. I'll be honest, I'm just looking for, for us to finally make a decision so I can stop talking about cannabis. Um, not user, not gonna be user, um, not gonna get into selling it, and um I'd like to stop talking about it, thank you.
Thank you again for the input and Councilman Campos, thank you for that insight. I too was on um just getting it over and done with. Uh, but you're right, we do have other priorities. Um, this is currently not one of those, and so, um, let's table this until twenty twenty-three. All right, and with that, um, I hate to do this right now, but we need to get it out of, out of our plate. Uh, we do have need for executive session, um, city council will now meet in executive session to discuss, um legal counsel about um current or potential litigation per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero L I for ten minutes, so we will be back at eleven o'clock. For ten minutes, so we will be back at eleven o'clock.